Welcome everyone and call to order at 6:00 PM. The regular city council meeting for Monday, March 24th, 2025. We can all stand for the pledge of allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in all.
Holly, will you call the roll, please?
Ludwig?
Present.
Haynes?
Here.
Jenkins? Ben Alsper?
Here.
Ryanes?
Here.
Gilroy?
Here.
Hanson?
Here.
I would entertain a motion to excuse Councilman Jenkins from this evening's meeting.
So will he.
Thank you. Thank you for your support. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. I'm looking for approval of this evening's agenda unless there are changes that need to be noted.
Make the motion to approve the agenda.
I was going to suggest an amendment.
Okay. Is it an action item or discussion item?
No, just discussion.
Okay, what is it?
I'd like to discuss the preparation of our council agendas. Should be a short conversation.
I will...
The preparation of the agenda?
Yeah.
Nice thing.
All right. I was going to hear that it's a proper and in a discussion item. This thing off.
Please take the motion to add something.
All right.
I'd like to think.
All right. On favor of adding item D to our discussion items, council agenda preparation. Are you making that motion?
Yes, I'll make the motion.
Okay. And do I have support? All those in favor, do I have to have a roll call? Okay, all those in favor of adding a discussion item, 10D?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. I'm looking for approval of the agenda as amended.
Make the motion to approve the agenda as amended.
Cover.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. And now we have an opportunity for audience participation with a maximum of five minutes per presentation. Is there anybody in the audience would like to come forward at this time? All right, thank you. Moving along, we have our council meeting minutes of March 10th, 2025. I'm looking for a motion to approve unless there are changes that need to be noted.
So will he.
Thank you so much. Do I have support?
I have support.
All right, thank you. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Now we have an opportunity for accounts payable. And Terry, you had an opportunity to review our accounts payable for this evening.
Yes, it did. And the number that we're all waiting for is 58%. So 58% of the money that was spent went to other government organizations. Wasn't spent by the city.
Great.
I think that's an important one. Other than that, I have some questions for John. He answered the questions. Although, I have to say, I'm not sure what EFTH and ACHs were approving tonight because the agenda numbers are different than the numbers on my paper. And the numbers on my paper are white out and then written in, so...
Oh, okay, I see.
I'm afraid I don't know what kind of motion to make here.
Do we... John, in your opinion, would you say that this could be a typo at the top of the... I mean, this is coming straight out of the system, so can we...
What's the typo, Mr. Hanson?
The checks, the check numbers are good and ACHs are good, but the EFT is 1371. And in my paper copy right here, it's 1431. But, the ACHs are 1412 to 1446, which means 1431 is in the middle, which means I'm just... I don't see any scoliosis or anything like that. I don't think there's anything wrong with it. I just don't know which ACHs and EFTs were improving.
I see what he's saying. So, in the long list where it's not separated by account numbers, the ACH numbers are different at the top than the report where it's separating it out?
The correct would be the fine detail that ends with 195, 439, 80.
So scroll down, Janus.
Page four.
The numbers are different.
Okay. So, I'll make a motion to... Should I make a motion?
Mm-hmm.
Make a motion to approve checks 78, 209 to 78, 243, EFT 1371, ACH 1412 to 1446, to a grand total of $195,439.80.
Thank you so much. I appreciate your attention to detail. And again, your attention to detail is amazing when you can tell us how much we're paying in percentage. Do I have support for the motion before us?
Sorry.
All right, thank you both. Holly, will you call the roll, please?
Ben Alsper?
Yes.
Ryanes?
Yes.
Gilroy?
Yes.
Ludwig?
Yes.
Hanson?
Yes.
Haynes?
Yeah.
All right, thank you all. That concludes our accounts payable for this evening. Moving along, we have a presentation by Tailgaters and the Brownfield redevelopment plan. So I'm going to turn this over to our city manager, John Hannupin, for him to lead us through this.
Thank you. As you know, Tailgaters has been making its way through the approval process for site plan. And discussed along with the desire from the applicant for brownfield funding to facilitate the cleanup of that property that's been contaminated and vacant for, I think, 45 years or so. So, there's a number of folks here from the team, the ads are here from the developer, and then their consultants are here as well, as well as Richard from LEAP who just came in the back. Richard's a regular at our DDA meetings now, which is great. So, I've preloaded their presentation up here, and so I'll kind of turn it over to their team to walk us through the information they've submitted and what they're looking to accomplish.
Sounds good. I'll just have you advance the slides and all. Great.
Introduce yourself for us, please.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
My name is Adam Patton with PM Environmental, and we work as the environmental consultant for the developers and owners here. So just a brief introduction for the plan as a whole. The site is located north of the I-96 entrance and exit loop, right on Williamson Road. The property has been vacant for a considerable amount of time, historically having been used as a gas station and a service station. Some metrics associated with the property, it's three and a half acres. Ultimately, it's going to have an investment totaling approximately $6 million, which will transform the site from its current state into a gasoline station, convenience store, and Dunkin' Donuts with a building size of 9,810 square feet. That business is planned and projected to create 50 construction jobs during development, and is projected to bring 55 part-time or full-time jobs with regard to its operations. The site's classified as a brownfield due to environmental contamination, and with the support of this body, we're projecting to commence construction this summer and hopefully wrap up construction early fall. Early fall, excuse me. Next slide. Here's kind of an overview of the layout of the property. Keep in mind, Williamson Road is to the left here. Ultimately, includes an ingress and egress pathway as well as a canopy associated with dispenser rounds. The station itself included a convenience store and the Dunkin' Donuts, and a drive-thru that goes around and is present along the north side of the building. Go ahead. Here's just a site profile or a front view with the convenience store on the center and right side, as well as the Dunkin' Donuts to the left. Go ahead. Just another profile associated with it. So, as I mentioned before, the property is environmentally contaminated just due to its historic gasoline service station use. Really, the property was originally constructed and developed in 1962 for use as, once again, just a gas station. It ultimately transitioned into service through the 70s, ceased those activities, and was in the end demolished in 2006. The property is contaminated with a variety of gasoline and other petroleum compounds that represent an impediment to development of the property and require environmental response activities in order to develop that as proposed. Those due care response activities include soil and groundwater management associated with just developing and installing utilities, the tank system, the dispenser rounds, et cetera. Groundwater treatment and management during the installation of the tanks. Installation of utility migration barriers and specialty gasketting associated with those utilities to maintain contamination and isolate it and keep it where it is currently and keep it from being exacerbated by the development activities. And then a variety of other activities that are pre-approved, inclusive of due care planning and the due diligence activities required for the property overall. Next slide. Here's a view just of the property, a little bit of bleak given the mapping there, but it does show the layout of the old station there with a considerable contamination that is present along, once again, the front face of the property, which really faces Williamson Road. You'll notice the majority of that is in and around the dispenser rounds and where the tank is planned to be with the building set back from there. Ultimately, those activities contemplated under the brownfield plan include these work plan exempt activities, due diligence activities, things like a baseline environmental assessment, as well as due care planning and a due care plan itself. Other activities including utility corridor migration barriers and chemical resistant gasketing, which are standard fare. Groundwater management, transport disposal, especially during utility installation and installation of tanks, as well as contaminated soil removal, transport and disposal, once again, to make sure that we don't exacerbate any contamination during the redevelopment activities. It also includes, you know, costs and activities associated with preparing the work plan itself and a 15% contingency for a total brownfield value of $435,107. Next. Just to reiterate, the increased taxable value of the property is projected to go from $41,000 to over $1.1 million with this redevelopment. As mentioned before, it is projected to create 55 permanent positions associated with the store operations. We expect to be a catalyst for economic growth in this particular area and will also enhance community services, which just aren't available in this particular location. And will also transform what has really been a long-term disused piece of property in this particular location, at least during my entire memory about the area. Moving forward, please. Here's just kind of an overview of a couple of locations, just so you can see what to expect, including their Holt, Oakmas, and DeWitt locations, with the next one being an interior shop. And with that, I thank you for hearing this out today and would ask for your support for this brownfield plan.
Thank you. Great presentation. Very excited to finally see something happen out there at that corridor. The first thing that comes to my house, that's a question. How will this impact traffic flow going up and down Williamson Road to and from that highway?
So, a traffic study has been done. It's expected to have basically some localized entrance and egress in and out of the station, but that's primarily.
Okay. And once you move forward with brownfield, when would you anticipate that brownfield work would start?
I'll leave it up to Chris and Jeff here, but it really is projected for the summer, once again, subject to support from the board.
All right, great. Thank you so much. Anyone else have a question?
I'm assuming your other locations that are similar, act that they're doing well.
My name's Jeff Haddad. I'm from 2810 North Williamson Road. You know, yes, things are going well at our other locations, and we'd love to bring one here to Williamson. I think you all would enjoy it very much, and we appreciate the consideration.
Thank you.
So, with the brownfield plan, since my time on council, this is the first brownfield development that we've had come. So I'm just trying to figure it all out. What is it you need from us with the brownfield redevelopment? What's...
We're looking for some relief on tax and taxes and looking to clean it up.
So you need tax relief from your local property tax? Is that...
Maybe I can clarify that. So, what we end up having here is a very environmentally contaminated, blighted property. So what we'll end up doing is redeveloping the property, increasing the taxable value of it. And by the incremental increase in taxes, that will essentially be paid back for the risk being taken in order to address just the environmental contamination at the property. You actually won't see a reduction in your taxes captured at all until after the brownfield is done with 13 years, and then they won't go down. You'll actually receive the added benefit of that.
Um, go ahead. Finish out.
So, the 15-year plan, you're saying we'll receive... We're going to pay back, I guess I'm trying to figure that out. You say we won't see a reduction. Is that because the property is currently now nothing? You have something being built, so obviously there'll be an increase there, but what is the difference between what would be if there was no brownfield loan of $435,000 or whatever? There is a difference there.
Yeah, so the taxes are projected to go up by about $39... I'll just say $40,000 for round numbers. Okay? And what's going to happen there is you'll... The developer will recapture that. They'll pay those taxes in, recapture that for the term of the brownfield until those monies are paid back, and then the community will have the benefit of those increased taxes on a forward basis.
The term of the brownfield, what is that?
Currently, it's set for...
It's for a tenure.
15 years, correct.
So...
So what does that mean? How could a brownfield have a term?
Well, the payback period is 15 years.
So it's a 15-year payback period?
Yes.
So we're paying back the brownfield?
You're reimbursing the costs associated with environmental for up to 15 years, yes.
Okay. So we pay it, you pay it, we both pay it? How does that work?
We pay it upfront. The taxes are paid just as normally, and ultimately, once again, for the bottom schedule there, roughly $40,000 is then returned to the developer after the taxes are paid to compensate them for the environmental costs that they had upfront.
So for 15 years, we collect the tax and give it back to you guys?
The additional increment.
For 15 years?
Up to 15 years, yes.
Up to 15 years?
Yes.
How do we know how long it's going to be? You said 15 years originally. How long is it going to be?
So if the taxable value of the property ultimately increases, that payback period or the term could actually decrease.
It could decrease, but we're not sure.
Correct.
Okay.
During my time on EDC TIPA, we always had presentations come in where there were grants available for brownfield phase one, phase two through the county. Are those funds still available? Is there anybody here from Birmingham County that can answer that?
I don't think anybody's here from Birmingham County.
There are some other numbers over here, and you're $435,000. That's included as the last one. There's other numbers in there, and then the total is 702. What are those other numbers?
Those are our taxes... Excuse me. There are a number of funds up to, I believe it's the last five years we have on this plan, that can also be captured and will be captured by the county Brownfield revolving loan fund. So those monies ultimately end up going back into the county to promote brownfield redevelopment.
Who pays those monies?
The developer in taxes.
Developer in taxes.
The developer in taxes.
In taxes.
Oh, in taxes?
Yes.
In taxes.
I'm going to turn over to our city manager very quickly. John, have you had experience with brownfield cleanups in your other communities where you've been?
Yeah, probably about a dozen or so. One thing that can be a little bit confusing is people hear, you know, taxes collected and then paid to somebody else. And right now, the amount of city tax collected on this property is like $140 bucks. And so, if it is redeveloped, that number goes up for us, about, man, roughly $14,000. The rest of the, you know, roughly $40,000 that's captured are all the other entities that are eligible because it is a brownfield. But keep in mind, it's not the city paying that.
Right.
It's taxes that we never would have collected in the first place.
Right.
And it's across all those entities, and it's a way... They ultimately have to pay the taxes.
Correct.
And it's just used for this portion of the cleanup, which is, you know, the $435,000, and then the local Brownfield revolving fund captures abortion in the later years. And that's typically how brownfields probably work.
When you say it captures a portion, does that mean that somebody pays it?
They're still paying their property tax. It's just being reimbursed to pay for the cleanup cost and then to the LBRF.
So LBRF is run by some...
Local Brownfield... Yeah, that's the county.
A county? So, the developers are repaying the county this $229,000 or whatever?
Over a period of time, correct.
Same sort of thing, it's over a 15-year period?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Tim, you wanted to weigh in.
Well, this is tax increment financing, the same as the DDA and the TIPA, where the increase in value, the taxes payable on the increase of value from the base year is captured for the purpose, whether it's the DDA or the TIPA, in this case, the brownfield. And then only once they're paid are they allowed to be reimbursed to the developer for eligible activities that have actually been undertaken. So...
Does this have your stamp of reason of it yet?
I just deal with the law.
Did you just ask the attorney to be reasonable?
Well, I'm going to...
A little deeper left of the city manager. This is okay, right?
We'll look at an agreement.
Yes.
And see that it meets statutory requirements and all of that, but it's up to this body to determine how they want to do this.
And I just want to remind our gallery and our council, this was a presentation. We are throwing a lot of questions out there. This is going to go through that process. I'm going to let Dan have the last comment, and then we're going to move on because this still has to finish with planning commission before it gets to us. Correct, John?
Not necessarily, but the final site plan is being reviewed next week, and you're not being asked to approve this.
Correct.
Because I knew there'd be a lot of questions and discussion.
Yep, okay. Dan, last comment, please.
If, just, there's been a lot of you guys, this looks like a great project, but is just trying to figure out where we're at when we haven't done brownfield before? Is this a deal breaker? If you do or do not get this approved from the board, is this a...
Can I speak to that?
Yes, absolutely. Introduce yourself.
My name's Chris Haddad. I'm a judge father and one of the founding members of Tailgaters and what we do.
Great.
You know, when we look at a project, we look at all aspects. The most important dollar amounts are the cost of the land, the bank financing, and other issues like this that can make this come to reality. We really honed in on the brownfield, knowing that the contamination that we were walking into was created by other entities, not us. We were hoping to get the support of the council in order to get reimbursed for things that were beyond our control that help us bring this to reality. And it is really a major milestone for us to get this approved. It's a lot of money for us. And what Adam was saying is it isn't, and John talked to the part, that it isn't costing you, but it is because you're still getting the tax you're getting now, and you're going to get more than that. And I want to speak to one more thing on the $435,000. That is worst-case scenario. And I talked with Adam when he was putting this together, and I said, "Adam, there's a lot of costs in here that I don't believe we're going to run into." And he says, "Well, there's groundwater there that could be contaminated." And I said, "Well, you know, we won't know until we get to that point."
Sure.
I'm almost positive it's not going to be $435,000. Adam wanted to protect us in case it was.
Sure, absolutely. And you look at worst-case scenario, and you, you know, prepare for the worst and expect the best. With your other three projects, did you have any brownfield contamination that you had to deal with?
In one of the three, and that was the Oakmas, Michigan project, I went through the same thing, and that was approved through Aladdin Township, Endo County, just like we're presenting here. And it took probably seven or eight years to reimburse us for our out-of-pocket expenses. And so, you know, this, I think, will be very similar. I don't believe it will be 13 years.
Sure.
I believe it will be much quicker than that.
Okay.
And, but I really do appreciate your support. Without it, we would be in a really bad situation because this is a significant portion of our financing needs for the project.
Absolutely. And I'm going to ask our city manager just one last question. As far as the working relationship with planning commission and the entities that are here right now, it's been a smooth process. How is it going? Any bumps in the road, but we're working through it? I mean, we're at this point, so I feel like we're doing pretty good, right?
Yeah, I mean, I think as far as site plans, it's been moving through the process in a good fashion and good faith by the developer and also by the, you know, the review agencies. There was a ZDA for some landscaping upfront that was granted based on some of the site constraints, so... But they're really, I mean, they are somewhat mutually exclusive things.
Sure.
I mean, you know, the planning commission will review that and do a good job of that, but then ultimately, as our council attorney presented, there will be an agreement that you'll have to approve because you are pledging tax increment finances later.
Okay.
And as far as like the reasonable, I mean, this is, you know, it's a fairly standard type of contamination for a little gas station. I mean, looking through the work plan, it's a fairly standard work plan with what you'd expect to accomplish. And just one last thing, it's not like an industrial facilities tax exemption where you're granting, you know, an entity from paying a portion of their taxes in order to be able to locate here or something like that.
Right.
These are tax dollars that they're only there if the project moves forward.
Sure.
And they're still being paid.
Sure.
They're just being used for eligible activities.
Right. I'm going to move aside in the agenda, but I want to thank you for considering Williamson and bringing something to, you know, a highway on off-ramp that's been empty for so long because we've talked about this a lot in, you know, me sitting in this seat for well over 10 years, the council members, our planning commission. So, thank you for wanting to invest in Williamson.
Well, thank you.
For what's worth, I think it's a good idea. I've been looking forward to this. I'm the detail guy, so that's why I'm asking detailed questions, not because I'm opposed to them.
No.
Okay? So it's not to be understood, okay?
Yeah. No, we appreciate it. We feel very welcome here too. I appreciate that.
Wonderful.
Thank you.
Thank you for being here this evening.
No problem.
And for a very thorough presentation.
Very good.
Appreciate it. All right, moving along on our agenda, we have our action items this evening. The first is going to be the farmers market agreement with Sowing Growth, and we do have a memo in our packet from our city manager, so I'm going to turn it over to city manager John Hannupin.
Thank you. It's, the farmers market agreement, it's actually, it's good through this current market season, the agreement we have. So this is actually an extension that would take us through market season '26, '27, '28, '29, and '30. And it actually, I think the expiration is set to expire in January of 2030, which is kind of hard to say out loud. But anyway, so that's what it is. We've had great partnership with the market. Things have been going well. They're going to be coming in a couple meetings, I think the 28th maybe, to talk about the new branding of the market.
Yes.
So, a lot of cool things happening. As you know, the grand opening's right around the corner, and it's, markets are really, it's a really amazing asset to have downtown. So, just a couple of folks here, if you have any questions, but certainly staff does recommend approval. There's really no, the only change to the agreement is just changing the date.
Okay, all right. Any questions from council? I mean, we all love the market and we love it. We love having it over there on the corner. And I did receive a request from Carol Granger to help open. I was traveling this past week, so I didn't have an opportunity to get back to her, but I would love to help open the market on opening day, so I will respond to her. But if there's no discussion or questions, I'm looking for the recommended motion before us.
Make the motion to approve the agreement with Sowing Growth for the use of McCormick Park as the farmers market location during market season, May through October, for the
Park as the farmers' market location during market season, May through October, for the period of January 1st, 2026, to December 31st, 2023.
Thank you, join our support. Thank you. I just want to clarify for our viewing community, too. There is no financial commitment within this motion. This is just a use, us agreeing that the market is going to continue on there for the next five years. Yes, Scott?
I'm on the board. Do I need to stay?
It's not a financial situation, so you don't have to.
Okay. You've disclosed it.
Yep, so you're good to vote on this, Scott. So, if we have a motion and we have support, Holly, will you call the roll, please?
Gilroy?
Yes.
Ludwig?
Yes.
Hanson?
Yes.
Haynes?
Yes.
Ben Olsford?
Yes.
Rimes?
Yes.
All right, thank you so much. Our next action item is our inflow and infiltration study. Again, we have a memo in our packet from our city manager, John Hanlon, so I'll turn it over to you.
Thank you. Usually I try and keep these brief, but this is, it's not overly complicated, but it's fairly technical. And we had discussed this on and off, probably even predating me, you've probably heard about inflow and infiltration. We touched at it at our visioning session in February. So, we do have, being close to our river and being close to groundwater, we do get rainwater and some groundwater into our sewer system. And during significant rain events, and in particular, we're a little bit lucky because we're actually nine inches under the annual snowfall drought for this year, and we're not getting a huge snowmelt. But when that happens, our wastewater plant spikes up from typical daily flows. You measure wastewater flow typically in MGD, which is a million gallons per day. We're usually around the .45 MGD. We have spikes up to a 1.75 MGD in severe weather events. You know, we're able to, you know, obviously maintain the plant, certainly not sustainable over a, you know, a month or anything like that, but our operators are skilled, we're able to manage through that. So, what we're trying to figure out, this was also presented at the visioning session, that City of Manchester, which is, you know, roughly, eh, about 50 or 60 miles south of here, very similar in size, they have a raising river, very similar age of town. And they were trying to chase the same issue, and they were contemplating building a $3 million equalization basin, which is just a big tank to hold, you know, kind of combined water and wastewater before they treat it. But rather than do that, they decided to try and figure out within their storm system where the storm may be infiltrating the wastewater. And so, what they did is they acquired these particular Hesco smart covers, and what they are is that they go right on top of a manhole, a sewer manhole, and they have a device that reads actual flow through there, and you can move them around throughout your system, and then you can pinpoint where the locations are where the water is getting into the system. So, for some of our recent projects, Potomac, Williams, and Lloyd, that will certainly help, in particular, North Potomac, because that's a larger stretch of sewer, and it's close to the river. But what this will allow us to do is to really isolate the problems and then put in various fixes, whether it's manholes with gaskets, whether it's lining of individual sewers or catch basins, and keep the rainwater out of the treatment.
Okay, all right. First question, is this within our budget for the rest of this fiscal year, or are we looking at July 1?
No, this would be, ideally, with approval, we would get these ordered right away, and then with the, with April and May coming up, which are typically among our higher-flow months, that would help us start to pinpoint some of the issues.
Cast 10 yards or two and up?
Two, yeah, two's plenty.
Because we can move them on.
Correct.
They're not gonna be permanent.
That's correct, yeah, yeah.
Okay.
And once we pinpoint the bad guys, we can fix themself.
Yeah, we can come up with, you know, and it's really, it could be as simple as a gasket or a manhole. It could be, in the Manchester case, they found, it was kind of a, it was near one of their parks, and that was like a major contributor, and they had no clue how or why. They just knew water was getting in there, and they were able to isolate it using this system. And we did, for due diligence for purchasing, we looked at a couple of others, but they were more expensive, and they did involve confined space entry, and so we're trying to avoid that obviously.
Question for you, what is life expectancy of one of these Hesco smart covers? If we purchase it?
Yeah.
What's gonna be our lifetime use of it?
Typically, I mean, you know, as long as we don't, you know, play frisbee with them or anything like that, probably five to 10 years. I mean, they do have some working parts in them that are electrical in nature, so, low-voltage electrical.
Are these Bluetooth or anything? Will they need updates and stuff like that?
They are, yeah.
So, will we have software updates that we will have to purchase, or is this included in the purchase price?
So, in the initial setup, you know, we get all the units, we get the training, we get the web-based application, even down to the point of, you know, if you really wanted to look up the storm flow over at the golf course, you could look it up on your phone. After this year, it's a nominal maintenance fee.
Okay.
Just for the software, the software.
And then my last question would be, once we purchase these, do they have a warranty that, you know, if we have a failure within the first year, anything, or a limited warranty?
Yeah.
Or how is that?
They have, I believe they have a year warranty for like the, yeah, the, again, it's subject to not beating on them, but yeah, they are warranted, but you know, it's not forever.
Right. All right.
Do you think the training is worth almost twice the price of the HESCO? How do they do that? Are there special features there somehow, or is it just...
It's just a different technology or a different company, just a different brand.
Yes, Scott?
Now, there are indications in your mind about these numbers that would indicate that you're gonna find something significant like the other time, or is it possible that it's just other people accumulation of water through a whole bunch of points that's just expected and you're gonna find out?
So, that's part of the mystery, and then part of the thing that, you know, keeps me motivated and also awake at night when it rains a lot around here, is, you know, how and why, and where, and where can we fix it? There's, it's likely, you know, simplest solutions likely near the river, but...
So, you do expect to find something where it's a large amount at one spot?
Correct, or at least large enough, you know, again, if we can, as I said, like, in August, which is a low-flow month, and, you know, people are kind of sick of water and everything, other than us watering flowers downtown, there isn't as much water usage in our wastewater, our plants, usually .35, .4 MGD, which is the lowest per year, and it doesn't rain a lot. So, you know, we can forestall plant, major plant expansions or anything like that for the foreseeable next 20 or 30 years, and that's even allowing for growth, give you an idea of context or scope. So, bear with me on math, but typical, each house, housing unit, for example, uses about 200 million, or 200 gallons per day of water. So, if you scale that out to like 500 homes, that's about 100,000 MGD. So, if you can find 100,000 MGD in the system, it makes us comfortable with any kind of, you know, reasonable expansion that we're gonna see here with housing over the next, you know, 10, 15, 20 years. And then it would also allow for some industrial growth if we desire for that.
Great conversation, great questions. If there are no other questions or discussion, I'm looking for the recommended motion at the bottom of the memo.
Make a motion to purchase two HESCO smart cover meters, including the unit's training initial setup, for $17,158.
Thank you so much, do I have support? Thank you. Holly, will you call the roll, please?
Ludwig?
Yes.
Hanson?
Yes.
Haynes?
Yes.
Ben Olsford?
Yes.
Rimes?
Yes.
Gilroy?
Yes. Now, we don't need to wish for abundant amounts of rain just so we can test these rain.
Yes, I mean, whether we like it or not, yeah.
But, you know, but I'm sure you guys will watch the weather once you get them so you can, you know, deploy them. Our next action item is going to be our Jubilee fireworks approval. We do have a memo in here, again, from our city manager, John Hanlon, so I'll turn it over.
Yeah, we go from water to fire with fireworks. So, this is an annual rite of passage, is, you know, allowing Jubilee to have fireworks at Dulster Memorial Park, certainly a highlight of the week there. So, don't have anything to add of them, and, you know, it's part of our code of organs is to seek approval or grant approval.
Right. And this is just kind of like Groundhog Day every year. We get this, and...
Are you occupied?
I've actually taken a couple steps back of Jubilee, so I'm still on the committee, but I'm no longer a committee officer.
You're gonna be a Dan.
I'm...
Basically, off committee. All that good stuff.
I'm gonna be full coach, sophomore.
All that good stuff. It's pretty straightforward what we're doing. You know, we always look forward to Jubilee every June, third week of June, so if nobody has any questions or discussion, I'm looking for the requested action at the top of the memo.
Make a motion to approve the request from Red Cedar Jubilee for Great Lakes Fireworks LLC to have fireworks at Howard Dulster Memorial Park in Williamson on Saturday, June 21st, 2025, as part of the Red Cedar Jubilee with notification made to Nisa.
Thank you so much. Do I have support?
Support.
Thank you both. There's no other discussion or comments? Holly, will you call the roll, please?
Hanson?
Yes.
Haynes?
Yes.
Ben Olsford?
Yes.
Rimes?
Yes.
Gilroy?
Yes.
Ludwig?
Yes.
All right, our last action item in our packet is the appointment of Brian Hamilton to the Parks and Recreation Commission for a term expire 6/30/2027. We have his application in our council deck this evening. Looks like...
Appreciate you.
Hi, how are you? Thank you so much for being here this evening, and thank you for being willing to, you know, step into a role. We appreciate that. And you are joining probably the most fun commission that we have here in the city. They do a lot of good fun work. Would you like to say a couple words, like, how long have you been here in Williamson?
It's gonna be close to a year in October, but my partner's family's from here, a few generations, but my family lives in the U.P. I kind of came down this road by, my first moved here, getting involved with the Michigan League Conservation Voters, but this was like more direct and local for me, so...
Well, great. Well, welcome to Williamson, and thank you so much for, you know, wanting to be a part of it. I'm looking for the recommended motion, please.
I'm trying to find the recommended motion.
You can just, you can just literally make a motion.
Make a motion to appoint Byron Hamilton to the Parks and Recreation Committee for a term to expire 6/30/27.
Thank you, Jerry. Do I have support?
Right.
All right, thank you. And we have support?
Yeah.
All right, thank you. Holly, will you call the roll?
Haynes?
Yes.
Ben Olsford?
Yes.
Rimes?
Yes.
Gilroy?
Yes.
Ludwig?
Yes.
Hanson?
Yes.
All right, again, thank you so much. That concludes your action items for this evening. We'll move along on our agenda to our discussion items. We have construction project updates. John?
Probably the biggest thing to point out, you've seen the cones and/or the trucks deployed. Once the weather got a little bit better, we started finishing up our sidewalk list for the year. Did have a couple that are pretty visible, particular one, right on the 100 block of West Grand River, we were working on there today. Sidewalk had kind of undermined right next to the building, so we were fixing that. But we've been in different spots all across towns, Fuller, South Potomac, so that will continue. That's really it for construction for right now. Once we get into budget discussions, we can talk about, assuming that there was approval, then we can talk about High Street and other projects potentially for this summer.
Great. Any questions for John or Barry in there? If not, I'll move along to the master plan update with Planning Commission.
Yeah, Planning Commission meets next week. Even with a full agenda of three site plans, we are gonna have a discussion on the goals and objectives. So, again, just narrowing from the work session that we've had and, you know, the DAD exercise and starting to formulate those.
Okay. And then main four safety improvements, I know when Phil was here, our last council meeting, he said that he's working with him, Dad, and we're just gonna kind of push forward.
Yeah, hopefully he wasn't, you know, taken to a highway secluded somewhere after his... Anyway, but nothing to add this time.
All right. We do have the addition of council agenda preparation, and I'll just kind of start this off with the history of it. Anything that needs to be submitted for a council agenda has to be done prior to the Thursday before our council meeting on the first and, or I'm sorry, the second and four Mondays of the month. So, those items go in, our city manager reviews them, obviously, if there are items that need action, those are placed. If a council member has something that they feel should be on the agenda, it should go to our city manager. When I first started in this role, I would get a draft copy of the agenda, but being in this role for almost 10 years, I have full confidence that what is provided in front of us is the necessary business at hand. So, I'll turn it over to Mr. Haynes, who asked for this to be added, and let you take it up here is why you wanted it added.
Yep. And this is not discouraging Holly's work or Barb's work. I'm thrilled that we're getting the agenda before the meetings, and the illustration I use, I've been on two boards where I'm getting the agenda the morning that I'm leaving in the afternoon for the meetings. So, that's not my question, and the accuracy of the agendas are not my concern. It's just that it doesn't, if we don't have any kind of a draft agenda given to the members, we have no other mechanism of research, questions, et cetera, prior to the actual posting. It's the lack of information that we have before the actual posting. If we weren't posting the agenda for the city's information, there would be no problem with me, because then we would just adjust it.
Sure.
So, I would like to see a draft agenda one or two days prior to the posting of the real agenda.
So, then council members would have input and research what they want to go on the agenda? I guess I'm...
Yeah, they have suggestions on deletions, additions, questions in general.
So, I mean, if you have an addition for something that you want to go on the agenda, you just need to reach out to the city manager prior to the Thursday before the meeting?
But we're not getting, we don't know what the agenda is until it's physically posted, formally posted.
I guess what I'm thinking is, is if there's something that we feel that strongly that we need to be there, you can reach out and say, "Hey, I feel like X needs to be on there." And they can say, "Well, it's already on there," or "It's not," and then we can discuss whether or not it should be there.
I'm not communicating well. All right. Let's say I want an addition.
Okay.
The only way now with the several weeks that I've been on is to do an amendment.
Okay, I see where you're going with this. So, previous, and previous council members that have been on here, I've had them communicate to me, "Hey, could we have this as a discussion item?" I have no problem being that relayed at conduit to city manager to say, "I've been contacted by council member A, and they would like to have topic XYZ as a discussion. Can we have it added into our agenda?" I don't know, I mean, historically, you know, like I said, I would get a draft, maybe a Tuesday or Wednesday, but I really never told somebody, told Holly or my former city managers, "No, I do not want that on there." I've always let it, you know, be free flow, what they provide to us, but certainly, we could do that. If you have something within a two-week span from when we leave tonight to before we meet again in April that you would like to see on there, you absolutely could raise the, send an email, call John, "Hey, I think it would be important for council to have this as a fresh ready and have it pop down there." But our deadline, you know, is that Thursday, so that, you know, really Wednesday night, so that Holly can finalize it and have it be published. And that's a part of Open Meetings Act, correct, Holly? That we have to have it published to certain...
Your council rules, say, by noon on Thursday, morning meeting, so you're to have your agenda set.
Does that sound like a good solution possibly? Like, if you, if any of us had something that we would like to have on it in between that two weeks before it's published, reaching out to city manager and saying, "I have an idea and I'd like to have it on council."
No, but I don't see, I don't see an administrative problem with just backing up a draft document two days before the formal posting.
Okay.
And then there's no question, and then there's no question as well, you know, I had a conversation with the mayor, or John, or Scott, and I wanted it on the agenda, and then it isn't. And if we have a draft agenda, we would know if it's going to be on the agenda or not.
So, are you saying you want something on the agenda and then make it on?
No, he's saying he wants the information of what the agenda's gonna be about.
I know what he's saying, but I'm asking about the current procedure. I'm not sure why you can't just call on Wednesday and say, "I only had something," and you would have it, right?
Or even wait till the last minute?
Or Monday, or Tuesday, or... So, did you try to add something to it, or you just procedurally wanted it?
Yes, but that's not really the topic, that's not the concern that I have right Yes, but that's not really the topic, that's not the concern that I have right now.
So-
I just, administratively, it should be easy to post a-
A draft.
A draft.
Okay.
Well, I have a concern about something being requested and not making it happen.
That's unknown. Let's just see how things like that work out. But that's part of my administrative concern, professional concern.
Okay.
Okay.
All right. Um, I'd like to have our, our staff weigh in very quickly because this is a discussion topic. Um, I mean, like I said, I know when I first started as mayor, I would get a draft from, uh, Holly and city manager Dolly. And we'd have a conversation, talk about it. I really never had any concerns with what was being presented as an agenda. But, um, do we have to amend our council rules for this if we're gonna provide a draft?
I don't strongly-
I want, I want to let.
She said yes.
No, I know, but I think our council wanted to say something, so I'm gonna let him say something right there. Yes, thank you.
Well, you do have council rules, and soon I have, most current version out there. It talks about the agenda being prepared no later than noon on Thursday preceding the meeting. So nothing will be considered unless placed on that agenda, except upon approval of five members at a meeting. So you could always add something to the agenda up to the day of the meeting with approval of a majority here, party members. Uh, the rules also talk about the agenda, the background material be delivered to all city council members on Thursday evening before the, uh, meeting. So you have it in advance. So if somebody wants something on the agenda, they can just call before noon on Thursday to get it in. Maybe a day or two earlier, it's suggested. And it sounds like, for the most part, they can get it out. There's no other rule here that says it's gotta be two people or three, or with the approval of the mayor or with the approval of the city manager. It doesn't say anything at all about that. It just says that the, uh, the agenda will be prepared and that, uh, nothing will be considered unless placed on the agenda, except upon further approval. Uh, it sounds like council number Haynes wants to see a draft of the agenda to see what it looks like, to decide whether or not he wants to add something before that.
I, or to, or to have time, or to have time to put something additional on the agenda.
But you still have it till noon on Thursday to do that.
Right.
But I don't know what it's going to be until it's posted on Thursday.
I, I guess I don't understand if you, if you feel like you, there's something that's an issue that you need on the agenda, it's an issue that you need on the agenda whether, you know-
Whether you see it prior or not.
But I won't know what the agenda is until it's posted.
Well, if you call and they say it's out again.
So do I need, do I need to call and ask what are all the agenda items?
No, you just need to call and say, please put this on the agenda, in which case it happens.
And, and, and so, okay, here's a scenario. I have topic ABC that I feel needs to go on council agenda for us as a discussion item. Because I want to discuss it and then have it moved to an action item at a future council meeting. So I call John and say, I would like, and this is Monday or Tuesday. Hey, I would like to have this put on the council packet for discussion that's going out this Thursday, topic ABC. That's great. We, we're, we don't have anything like that. I think that'd be a great idea. Or I could get the response, I'm one step ahead of you. We do have that on as a discussion item. Can we talk about it? Make sure we're on the same page? Yep, this is what I want to discuss. Yep, this is what we have on there. Or that's a great idea. We're gonna add it as a discussion item. And then we get our packet on Thursday, we have time to review it and come to- And if, if you get the council packet on Thursday and your questions about it, you've got from Thursday to Monday to get ahold of John or Holly for clarification of the agenda. And as we did this evening, we can add something. The only thing we, I would be hesitant to add is an emergency action item because nobody has had the, uh, the, uh, time to prepare for an action item. And I think that is, um, something that we frowned upon in, in prior, unless it's something that has happened, uh, dealing with DPW wastewater treatment, uh, that we've gotta have, uh, action taken this evening, and the problem just happened Monday morning. So we've done that where we've had emergency action items added at the council meeting. But would that make you comfortable if you had something that you wanted on here and you were to call John and say, John, I'd like to talk about ABC. Can we add it as, as a discussion item? John replies, John, that's great. We'll add it. It'll be in the council packet for Thursday. Or his response may be, I'm one step ahead of you. I know that there's been discussion during council meetings. I, I have this on as a discussion item. Or are you just wanting to see a draft prior to Thursday? So that you can have a draft prior to Thursday. I guess that's my question. Do you feel like you're always going to have something you want to add at every council meeting? Or can we start with if you've got an idea, you call John and it goes on? Or do you absolutely want to have a draft?
I, I would like to see a draft because it allows me to know what's going to be on a published agenda. And it's not necessarily additional items. It could be, well, we discussed the stupid three-dollar fee that we charge our citizens for paying their taxes. I'm wondering if that's gonna be on the, uh, on the agenda.
You can put on the agenda whatever you want.
And I can discuss it.
Because of that, like-
I, I understand that, but I don't know what the agenda is until they formally post it.
But you should know what you want to put on there.
Yeah, you can put on anything.
I don't want to put on anything. I want to know what's on there.
Well, I think we could put the sign of the election on and vote on it at the next meeting.
To adjust.
Okay, I'm gonna go back over to our city attorney, and then I think we're gonna wrap this up.
More directly to the point of your prior question. There's nothing in the current council rules that requires anybody to get a draft beforehand. If there was a practice informal for the city manager to present one to the mayor or anybody else, that would be an informal practice, not necessarily enforceable as a council rule.
Okay.
And so if you wanted to have an enforceable council rule that somebody gets a draft before, while there's still time to add something to it, you could do that by motion to amend the rules if you wanted to do that. Or you could allow it to remain as an informal practice, and that would be subject to if the city manager has signed an inclination to do it.
Okay. I'm gonna ask John to weigh in because you've heard all of our comments, and you are our city manager. You are the one that helps prepare the agenda that we get every, every two weeks. Do you have thoughts about this?
I mean, we, so if somebody has some, if somebody wants something on the next agenda, I mean, because we have twenty-one days till our next meeting. They could, they could reach out between, anytime between now and Wednesday evening. Um, I try and telegraph when I do off-week reports to, to let you know what is likely gonna be on the agenda, even like going forward a couple, couple months when we know that work sessions are coming up. Um, I think, I mean, council rules generally get put in place as a reaction to chaos that went before. I mean, and I'm not saying that happened here. I didn't know that you used to get a, a draft agenda, but knowing that the rules don't specify that, it never bothered to send a drafted dead, agenda to you.
Right.
Um, and kind of the history of, of putting things on the agenda, um, some of them we see, you know, year after year. Some come up, like an appointment to, to Parks and Rec Committee. But, um, I mean, if you're gonna amend the rules and we post a draft agenda, we could do that. But, but I think the idea is, is keep in mind, um, if, if someone has an action item and it requires, um, a lot of research or it requires like three bids, i- i- it requires like something more than just putting it on the agenda for discussion if it's an action item. Um, if someone comes to me Tuesday and says, hey, you know, I want to replace the North Putnam Bridge, and we're gonna put this on an action item for Monday, I'm gonna say, well, we can put an action item and it's, you can direct us to do the work, but we're not gonna have an answer for you on Monday.
Right.
So I'm comfortable if you want us to figure out how to post a draft agenda. Um, we have a pretty good id- idea usually by the week of. Um, we have a draft agenda file that we keep as a running tally, but as the city attorney pointed out, we should amend the rules, and that's what we're gonna do, and then formalize that process. But I, you know, since I've been here, I don't, I don't think that there's been anything specific that, that has not made the agenda when somebody wanted to make the agenda.
I think the informal system is just fine. So we moved the budget thing around so that you could have a special page in budget things with the columns lined up instead of offset like that. And we did that for you because it's, it's kind of a silly thing, but you really wanted it, so we did that for you. This feels like the same sort of thing. We've got a process for making the agenda, and you want us to do a test special agenda, agenda thing, and change the rules and all that for you. And I just think that's, that's silly. Let's not be silly. Especially, let's not be silly and angry.
Good. I think that this has been a good conversation. Um, and I want to respect everybody's feelings about this. Um, I would like to propose that if you, any of us, have something that's keeping us awake at night that we want to talk about, that we contact our city manager and we say, I would like this put on the council agenda for the upcoming meeting. And that way, we all have time to see it on Thursday, formulate our thoughts about it. John does a very good, very good job of making sure that our council packets are thorough and they are prepared well. And again, hats off to our outstanding city clerk and our deputy clerk. So my proposal would be that if there's something that you want on there, call up, email, request it to be on, and this goes for all council members. Um, and if something happens, that you get to a council meeting and you thought of something, uh, between the span of Thursday and Monday, we have no problem amending a, a, a council agenda to add a topic. Um, because it always starts as a discussion item, and through our discussion, we can make the choice to move it to an action item at a future council meeting. So that's my stance on it. And I don't think anybody's feelings are, um, silly. I'm not trying to diminish anybody's feelings. But I think that, you know, um, we've done this status quo for fif- I've been here since two thousand fifteen. The system has worked. Um, we all have the ability to contact our city manager. That's why we hired him, and that's why he works for us. So if there is something of concern that you want on the council packet, you contact our city manager directly, um, prior, you know, during that time span from council meeting to council meeting. And then that gives him the opportunity to do the work, the research that may be needed for a topic. But I, I, I guess I'm, I'm, I don't, I'm, I'm fine with how our process is.
I'd like to see us move on.
Yes. And we can always discuss this again if somebody would like to put it on the council agenda.
Yeah, I'm okay with being an action item and doing it.
Were you talking about amending the, the council rules as Attorney Brown had mentioned would have to do if we were gonna do a draft, is that what you're saying?
I'm saying that, I mean, if I was on his team, what I would have done is just ask for it to be an action item to make the change to have a draft agenda and see how people thought about it and threw their votes.
Sure, okay, yeah, and that's a, that I-
Put it in for next meeting, Amy.
Sure. Like, have-
You wanna do that? You wanna have an action item for next time?
Yes, but I understand. I'm not looking to formally change, uh, rules and procedures. I, I was just asking for help, an administrative help.
I think that's what's required, according to our order.
No.
In order to make it an enforceable thing.
I don't need it to be enforceable.
Would just have an informal system of having the city manager, the city clerk, provide a draft of an agenda before the Thursday deadline.
It can be informal, for example, when I was on council before, something happened that caused the mayor to want agenda items that two councilmen requested. It never went through the rules. It just was an informal thing that everyone followed because the mayor requested it.
Sure, sure.
That can happen.
Tim?
So are we saying we need like this agenda put out on a Tuesday instead of a Thursday? Is that what you're kinda, I mean-
No, and I apologize. I'm not communicating well.
No, you're, no, you are. No, I, you just want it before him, before Thursday, so you wanna know what's on the agenda. So if you get the agenda on Tuesday, then you'll know exactly what's gonna be coming to the one that's gonna be delivered on Thursday. Now you have two days before that to amend anything or put anything on there that you want. And what I was trying to say is, it's just like today. You wanted this, so we did it, right? So it, you said, okay, we amended it right here. That can be possible too.
Mm-huh.
Right? And it still gets discussed, so, you know, I mean, you're not gonna get to break down the details of why that stuff's even on the agenda. It's just not gonna happen.
Yeah, you're not gonna get a full packet-
You're not gonna go full packet, y'all.
On a Tuesday as a draft.
And let the city manager know. You're not gonna get that into before, before prior.
And I guess all I would say is that-
I mean, you're not the city manager.
If you're requesting something to be added, it's just an automatic discussion item because if you had a, if, if any one of us requested a draft on a Tuesday and said, I need to have this on there and it needs to be an actionable item, like our city manager just said, they have to have time to prepare and make sure that we have all the information in front of us in order for it to be an actionable item. So if you receive a draft on Tuesday, the only thing that would be considered to be added would be at that discussion level, that discussion item level. So if you, if we wanna put this on as an action item, that we get drafts on Tuesday, but just the caveat is that if you get a draft on Tuesday and you know that you want to put something on, it only goes on as a discussion item, and you have to be able to articulate why you want it on as a discussion item. You have to be able to give our city manager that background piece as to why it needs to be a discussion, because we have to have something in our packet in order to, you know, know what, because then we get the draft, something goes on, and somebody says, well, wait a minute, I don't know what this discussion item is. So I think it, I think the best way moving forward is if, if there's a concern, call, call John and, and talk through it. That's why he's here. Talk through it. And then you're able to say, this is something I've been thinking about. Can we have a conversation? Because I think it needs to be a discussion item on a future council agenda. Does that sound like a good assumption?
Yeah, he might want to answer your question, so it doesn't have to make it to the council. If you have a discussion and, and you might get your answer before it even needs to be discussed between all of us. So that's, I mean, that's a no-brainer, really.
No brainer. I think we should move on.
I think we will move on. I think we're gonna, uh, keep our, uh, future council agendas the, this fashion. But again, we've got twenty-one days before our next council meeting. So if there is something that you feel needs to be on the, the council agenda, please contact the city manager and have that conversation because that's why he's here for us, is to, to be able to bounce ideas off of.
He actually works for us.
Well, he does. He does. Terry, thank you so much. Can you tell me his percentage? All right, moving on. We did not receive any correspondence. We do have our department house reports. And so city manager John Hannafin, can you give us your update? And also, one thing that, um, was mentioned a little bit earlier was our workshops for our budget. And do we know what those are?
Yeah, we have you do that. And we did set our work sessions for, uh, April twenty-eighth and May twelfth. Um, so those, so we'll have at least those two. Um, in the past, two, two sessions have, have been sufficient. Um, the council will be presented a draft budget at the next council meeting, which is April fourteenth. You'll actually get it before that. Um, and so you'll be able to have that draft, um, you know, at least a couple weeks in advance of the, uh, the work session. And that is by charter required to present that to you. Um, it's, uh, gonna be a, a busy month, um, in April with, I think all of our boards and commissions will meet next month. Um, I'm not sure CBA will, but FIFA, DDA, Parks Planning, and then Council, of course. So a lot going on, a lot of good things happening. Um, that's about all I have to add. Um, Chief Weiss is actually, uh, participating in the police academy, um, this, this evening, so he apologized for not being here. He wanted to be there because our cadet, um, uh, cadet Medrano is, is there. And so he gets to participate in some of the exercises today.
Right.
He will be here, um, at the next council meeting.
All right. Excellent. Thank you so much. Uh, moving along, subcommittee, uh, committee reports. Anybody? And Terry, you said you had an interesting NESA report you wanna share.
NESA, yeah. There was quite a discussion about the agenda, which in NESA, they do this tricky, tricky thing, and it's kind of a standard thing for them, that they do discussion items first and then action items later. And one of the tricky things they do is they say, oh, let's move this discussion item to an action item. Then, and then they vote on it. And this time around, they moved from discussion to action, a quarter-million-dollar purchase. Quarter-million dollars. And there's no, I, I think this is contrary to the spirit of the open, uh, open meetings law. I'm not sure if it's contrary to the exact wording and so forth, but, um, at, at the last minute, we come up. And, and the thought goes like this. It's, it's, the thought is, we found this really good deal. This quarter-million-dollar, really good deal. And if we don't, if we don't sign up for it today, then we're gonna lose this really good price. And that's what the guy, that's what the guy does in the little office, you know? Or in the car. And it's, oh, you gotta do this today. If you don't sign this thing today, you're gonna, you're gonna look. This, this model won't be available in two months and so forth. And it's, it's just, it is, I don't know that it's illegal, but it certainly is contrary to the spirit of the idea that we don't make major financial decisions without telling the public ahead of time that we're gonna consider this at this meeting, which is what they- that we're gonna consider this at this meeting, which is what they did.
Wow, that's unfortunately a pretty regular occurrence.
And I think that's a regular thing. So I've been to two meetings, three meetings now, so far, and I think two of the three times, yeah, two out of three times, they've done it.
You could always call Point of Order. You could call Point of Order on that, and let them know that because you were not properly informed of a financial, you know, contract, and the public...
That's what you did. We kind of, it's four townships and two cities, right? So there's six people plus a person who's the member of the board. And so they went around the room, and they said, "Well, in your particular little government unit, well, there's a township or a city, how do they do, do they do discussion first and then action, like we're doing here? Or do they do action first, and then discussion, and they don't move discussion items to action?" Well, I think of the six, yeah, of the six governing organizations, of them, only three do it like we do, where there's action first and then discussion. And the other four do the same kind of thing, where they have a discussion, and then they can, at the last minute, move it from discussion to action and vote on it. So, yeah, and we had quite a discussion, I think that...
Keep trying to be the voice of reason for us.
Yeah, okay, so in the process, we bought, NESA bought a quarter million dollar ambulance, which was a good, good deal, because it was gonna be $270,000 if you tried to sign this up next week. So, bad move all the way around, but that's the way they run things over there. And, yes, that's the report.
Anyone else, yes, yes?
The candidates approved the candidate one, the less of a setback, and we approved that. The apartment owners came and made an argument not to do it, but it didn't sway anybody, so we put it there. And we agreed that it had already been approved once before. And I enjoyed being there, it was very interesting, I loved it.
Excellent, great, well, thank you. Thank you very much for filling in, certainly appreciate that. And I certainly appreciate that we have the ability to do that when we don't have council members available. Anyone else with their boards?
Yeah, I've got a couple things with Parks and Rec.
Yes.
I enjoyed that, being on Parks and Rec, you know, this. But I mean, it was really fun, it was really enlightening. And one of the things that I found out, and again, I'm sure all of you were aware, of Friends of, Friends of, Friends of Williamson Parks?
Yes.
Did all of you know that that was an organization that existed?
Yes.
I mean, I'm sure you did.
Yes, they are one of our best fundraisers for our parks. Heather Delightow is tireless, tireless.
I could read, I was excited for her, I just, so that, that was really encouraging.
Yes.
But to tell you a couple things that happened. There were two wood carvings that now have a permanent place. There's like a little kitty's animal type of thing, and then there's a bench. It did not have a permanent location. It's now going to have a permanent location by the playset areas. They are going, we now have, we have a turbine. Now, did all of you know that we have an antique turbine?
I knew that it was there, but it wasn't placed yet.
Yeah, there's going to be, there's gonna be a place for that on the far, when I call the far side of Putnam, on the river. And the most important thing that I found out is that the Derby is going to be a week before the beer jam is erected. And I was wondering about mass chaos and riots, I'm not one, so I had to kind of chuckle.
So the deal with that is, there will be, a carnival is returning to Jubilee this year for the first time in a long time. And in order to make room for the carnival and the Derby, the Derby will be the Saturday, the day before Father's Day. So it'll be starting Jubilee instead of ending Jubilee.
Wow, okay.
And so there'll be a carnival in the, because the Derby pit has to be torn down to make room for the carnival, which will open on Wednesday.
Awesome, that's been a cool change, that's neat, that's neat, excellent.
The carnival will be in the grassy area, and we'll see where I'll, there's still some talks with the city, where I'll...
Okay, excellent, cool. I told you Parks and Rec was the funnest part.
I really had a good time in the, in finding out about the Friends of Williamson Parks. I go, "Wow," because I could tell that they do a lot.
They do, they do a tremendous amount of work for our parks. And we would have been able to build volunteer park playground. It was 100% fundraised. And like I said, tireless work of Heather and that cool Williamson, Friends of Williamson Park group, because they go out and they solicit those donations, and those sponsors, and get in-kind work done, and so they are a great service organization. We do have, as well as many of our service organizations in Williamson, are all very wonderful. We had a DDA meeting, and we started talking about our budget cycle for DDA. We are in a very, very good position with DDA right now. We talked about DDA's repayment to the General Fund, because General Fund floated the money to DDA for the old mill parking lot restoration that was very, very desperately needed. And so that's on a five-year repayment plan. We talked about possibly repaying it in full, but we also don't want to diminish our fund. We want to make sure that we maintain a healthy, a healthy budget balance. But the city manager did feel that it would not hurt us if we were to pay it in full in advance. There is a small interest rate that, it's about a 2% interest rate, that we're paying on that loan from General Fund. We talked about streetscapes with doing some new concrete planters, because we've taken all of those old metal Williamson planters off of our main sidewalks, because they reached their end of life. They were far beyond any type of restoration or repair. And so we're talking about bringing in some tall, between two and three foot, concrete planters to give that texture throughout our downtown city. We also talked about our facade program that we have for downtown businesses. We haven't had any businesses apply for facade help, but we do have a wonderful facade assistance program through our DDA, where a business downtown can do a facade application asking for assistance, and based on the square footage or what they're looking to do, we will, we will grant them dollars from DDA. So shout out to any of our downtown businesses that are watching. If you're in need of some facade work, please reach out to our city staff, and they can lead you through that process. But, you know, we're just excited about a lot of our community events that we've got coming up. We have, it's called That Brand New Event in May, and I actually got our chair, Brooke, from DDA here. What are the dates for that again?
That's gonna be on May 17th, Saturday, May 17th.
And so it's gonna be, it's called That New Event, right?
It's called Brands, Brand New.
Brand New, Brand New Event.
Brand New Festival, yeah.
And so Brand New is a play on springtime. Everything's brand new in spring. And so it's gonna be held at McCormick Park. We've been posting information on that, on our Williamson Events page. Right now, we're looking for different sponsor levels. You can be some very cool flower levels for sponsoring that event.
Website is 517ei.com, super easy, even I can remember it without my notes. Other thing, the second thing I wanted to just quickly touch on, I know that there were some questions around Brownfield, and TIF, and how does it work, and who does what. So one of the things that I'd be happy to do, and my team and I can do, is just come out to the next meeting and just give like a 10-minute crash course. I'm sure it wouldn't involve any presentations or anything formal, but I will talk to John about getting on the agenda, and just coming out and doing something light. You know, I've seen a couple of really good images that helped me just internalize it. Still learning what TIF is, but understanding that it's tapping into that new addition, right? You're not tapping into anything existing. And to my understanding, it's a local-only capture, so there won't be anything coming from the schools. There's no state involvement, but I know that, I saw Eagle on their TIF table when I was reviewing it, so I do have a follow-up with them to talk about where that state capture comes from in year one. But a good thing about the BRA is, if Williamson had their own BRA, they would be making that formal ask to you for approval. There would be a lot more review with an environmental firm here at this level, but because it's going to the county, we will be involved in helping them. They have to submit a formal application to LEAP. And then LEAP will be helping Inglewood County BRA administer that process and go through the checks and bounds for public meetings, any notices that need to be sent out to any neighboring taxing jurisdictions and things like that. So I will be around for that, and if you have any questions, I'm sure you can get my information from John, and we can just touch base. But yeah, happy to send something over if you don't need us to come out, and just give like a one slide that you can put up, and some words. But yeah, happy to bend and flex and help as needed there, so.
Awesome, great, thanks for being here this evening, appreciate it. Councilmember comments, I'll start with Tim.
Yeah, I'm good.
All right, Scott?
Yeah, I did, ready for New Farmers Market season. So a guy from Canada is giving us a...